Good evening. I'd like to call to order the May 13th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Ms. Boak, would you please call the rule?
Councilmember Spatterford?
Present.
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Pelly Van Ooglu?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Present.
Councilmember Cost?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson? All members present.
Thank you. Okay, we have the minutes of the May 6th and May 8th meeting. Vice President Hussein.
Sure, I will move the meeting minutes of May 6, 2024 as presented.
Can you hear my phone?
Sorry. Yes, I will move the, sorry, the May 6, 2024 meeting minutes as presented. I was not present on May 8.
Okay, we have a proper motion. Do we have any questions, concerns from council? Seeing none. All those who favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All who oppose? Alright, motion passes. Alright. Oh, uh... Spatterford, could you move the minutes for May 8, please?
With pleasure, Garza. I moved the minutes from May 6, 2024.
Oh, May.
May. What did I say?
Six.
You said six.
Oh, I thought I said, oh, okay. May 8, okay.
Okay, we got a proper motion for the May 8 minutes. Any questions, concerns, council? Seeing none. All those who favor, please state by saying aye. All who oppose? Alright, motion passes. Okay, thank you. At this time, we are to public comment on agenda items. If there's anybody from the public that would like to speak on agenda items, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Loretta Stanaway, and I'm going to talk tonight about the budget and the budget priorities. I have said this many times down here, and I'll keep saying it until it gets so old that maybe it gets acted on. Your three priorities, whether you're the council or the mayor, should be, first, public safety; second, public service; third, public parks. Anything and everything that takes away from funding those adequately to provide full, complete, necessary, appropriate services to the citizens is an abdication of your responsibilities and duty to the city. That means that when you talk about relocating City Hall, you're taking away from your citizens. When you talk about building an ovation center, you talk about taking away from your citizens. When you fund something like a 311 center instead of providing more services to the others, then you're taking away from the citizens. We need to be funding the police and the fire to a point where they have every tool in their box that they need, every appropriate wage that they need, every recruiting effort that they need, and every option to do something like offer them a housing bonus to get them to sign on with Lansing versus somewhere else. Everything that we do that diminishes the funds that can be used for things of that nature, for the nature of having complete functioning suite, uh, street sweepers, et cetera, is an abdication and a disregard for the needs of your citizenry. And so I ask you to think about those things when you pass and vote on these budgetary issues, keeping in mind that we are not here to serve Boji. We are here to serve our citizens. Thank you.
My name is Nicholas Zandi, and I am the interim president of the Old Everett Neighborhood Association. And someone who's in that position, I say that I believe that the, since we're talking about the budget, we should consider funding for the Neighborhoods Department because there are plenty of neighborhoods within the Second Ward that don't have proper neighborhood associations. And now we've got another neighborhood that's applying to be in an actual association, my neighborhood specifically. And so to accommodate that, there needs to be more funding so that more neighborhoods can apply for those neighborhood grants because many neighborhoods absolutely need them. And they absolutely need neighborhood associations so that they can get their voices heard on the city council. The Second Ward is definitely lacking compared to the other wards when it comes to neighborhood associations. Look at the Third Ward. Plenty of neighborhood associations. The First Ward has the East Side, one of the biggest neighborhood associations in the city. And we've also got the Third Ward having Churchill Downs, one of the best organized, at least in my opinion, and having one of the biggest turnouts. And so because of that, we need to have, uh, we need to prioritize funding. Yes, we should prioritize funding for parks so that people can have places to go to and to protect our environment, but we should also fund our Neighborhoods Department so that more and more, so that they can accommodate more neighborhood associations for neighborhood grants and neighborhood representation.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment? Alright, seeing no additional public comment. We didn't, we also didn't have any registered to speak virtual, so we will move on down to presentations. We have the mayor and community media. Would that be Mr. Lawrence?
Jake and I are gonna tag-team this, and Jason is on his way down also to handle the community media part.
Just please make sure your green light is on so we can hear you properly. And the floor is yours, and once you guys are done through with the questions, we will open up to questions for ourselves.
We had it in our minds. We're gonna answer these questions separately. We'll, we'll do our office and then community media.
Cool.
Alright. So the first question, what's the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to proposed? No significant operational changes in our budget are proposed in the mayor's office. We're maintaining the personnel changes and efficiencies that were adopted as part of the FY '24 budget. Question number two, are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for, and if so, why? The answer to that one is none. Are there any rate or fee increases? There are not. Are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? No, there are not. Are there any eliminating, combining, contracting of positions in our budget? There are not. Are you able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with this budget? Yes, we are. Are there any new initiatives or services that we'll be providing? No, there are not. Who are the two top largest vendors within your department, and when were they last bid? The mayor's office has no recurring contractual services. Our primary cost includes things like office supplies, copier expenses, promotional things, travel and mileage, et cetera. What, if any, operational changes have we made to become more efficient? We've incorporated the reductions as part of our current year budget that were proposed last year and maintain those changes through this next fiscal year.
Good evening. My name is Jason Gabriel. In case you don't know me, some of you are newer to the council. I have been with the city of Lansing for 15 years and the director of the Lansing Public Media Center since October. And I also will read through the budget department presentation questions sent to me and, and respond, leaving time for additional questions, hopefully. What is the difference with your budget from the current year to the proposed budget? This budget represents us being fully staffed and converting the former Gibson's bookstore into an office and studio system for use by the city of Lansing and peoples of Lansing. Question two, are there any changes in the services that your department is responsible for, and if so, why? No, we support the city of Lansing with video productions of live shows like the city council, or from the city council chambers, and capture events and activities of the city of Lansing for more accessible viewing. Question three, are there any rates or fee increases, and if so, why? There are not. Question four, are there any major equipment purchases proposed in our budget? This yes, this budget proposes the two video servers that run the two TV stations being replaced in the next year. Our current video servers were made by a local vendor that no longer supports those systems, and they've become out of compliance with our current IT safety standards, and we're proposing that they get replaced. Number five, are there any eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions in your budget? And if so, provide specifics. There are not. Question six, are you able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with this budget? Yes. Question seven, are there any new initiatives or services that your department will be providing with this budget? So, yes, we are completing our 10-year refresh of checkout equipment and have new video equipment for the members of the Lansing Public Media Center that will be available to check out for educational, creative, and community non-commercial purposes on lansingmedia.com. We have also begun to digitize old city council meeting tapes that have previously been stored by council staff in a, in a space. We are currently also in a campaign to engage and encourage neighborhood groups and community nonprofit organizations to create new video content for their audiences on the community TV station on Comcast Channel 16. Question number eight, who are the top two largest vendors for your departments, and when were they last bid? Our two largest vendors are B&amp;H Photo and Video and Dell. B&amp;H won a bid within the last calendar year with the equipment refresh that I mentioned. And Dell was selected as part of an RFP from the IT department within the last year for the city's long-term digital shared storage. Question nine, what, if any, operational changes have you made to become more efficient in your department, and what are the savings? So, our operational changes have been pronounced due to us now residing in a much smaller building. We've been in the right, we've been in the process of right sizing the studio facilities to the most optimum uses by the most people as possible. With our department's move, we're now receiving a significant increase in the number of people walking in to tour the facility, and this has led to an increase in studio use and more full classes in teaching the public how to create and make quality video productions, forcing us to be more efficient in all of our public educational and government media offerings.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Our internal auditor, would you like to add anything?
No, I've got a couple, a couple questions, Mr. President. Thank you very much. I'm gonna start with Jake and Mark. When I go through the line item detail of the mayor's budget, one of the line items is called temporary help, and there's $39,500 requested to be granted there in fiscal year '25. So, under temporary help, what do you use that for? Who do you use that for?
That's the line that we use to pay interns for in our office when we have them.
That's it? Interns? Thank you. The other thing is, you know, I've only been here a week, so give me a little slack. As I look through the, the budget detail and the budget narrative and the organization chart, I don't see people that I know are working to get ready for the ovation. Dominic Cochran, Emily Linden, so where am I gonna find them in the budget? Where am I gonna find them in the organization chart?
The Lansing Public Media Authority is its own Act 31 corporation. There may be expenses that run through the city at some point, but as of this time, they're a separate agency similar to LEPA. Once they have an audit, that will be included on a regular basis, or, um, a budget in our budget book, similar to LEPA.
So where are they in '25? Are they in Jason's budget?
Right now, they are just starting out as a entity, so they are not yet included in our budget document.
So they're nowhere in the '25 budget? They're, they're working every day, but they're not in the budget?
They're in a separate entity's budget, the Lansing Public Media Authority. Yes.
I, I'm sorry. Give me that again?
Lansing Public Media Authority. I can send you some of the articles of incorporation as they were adopted by city council.
So Lansing Public Media, is that a 101 general fund account that they're being paid out of?
I believe it's an Act 31 building authority. Our city attorney might be able to clarify.
Sure, I can speak to that briefly. It, it's a, it's a separate subdivision of government that's enabled by Act 31 of 1948. It's like a building authority or LEPA, which is an independent entity. The city does not directly fund them through any kind of services agreement at this time.
Okay.
And I don't know that they ever will. They are independent. So they wouldn't appear in the city's budget documents. They would be probably part of an audit eventually because, like, I think all of our agencies are generally included in our audit, but they, they haven't really existed until recently.
But they're, they're, they're paid with the city of Lansing paychecks?
Right now, the plan is that they won't be paid through taxpayer dollars. So the goal is that this will be largely self-supporting, either through its initial operations, fundraising, and other opportunities. So they're working to bring in their own funding and exist entirely independent from the city.
Okay. Is there anybody there except for the two I know about, Dominic and Emily?
Just those two.
And as far as for the next fiscal year?
Yep. I, I'm not aware of any changes to that.
Okay, thank you. That answers it. And for Jason, a couple things. Again, I, I hound sometimes on this temporary help line. Now, you've got, in the 2025 budget, you've, you've budgeted to hire a brand-new full-time person, and your temporary help budget went from $44,000 down to zero.
Correct.
Really?
Well, it's that we're taking a 12-year staff member and having them fill the full-time position.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. And the other thing, and, and I'm sorry, maybe you can't even answer this, but one of your line items, one of everybody's line items, is insurance and bonds. And for your, for your cost center, that cost in 2025 doubled. It went like from 5,000 to 11,000. Did you just get that number from finance, or did they tell you what was behind it?
Yep, I can answer that one.
Alright, thanks, Jake.
I might be able to answer. The temporary help for the Public Media Center was unused in the past few years. I can't remember or couldn't find exactly the reason why it increased in the last budget, but not being used and putting this full-time person in, we just eliminated it outright to cover that cost. For the insurance and bonds, that is allocated according to personnel expenditures, and it hadn't been looked at in a period of time other than incrementally increasing it. And so this past year, took a look at FY '23 personnel expenditures and just allocated it according to that methodology.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you, all three of you. Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you. Do we have any additional comments, questions from council? Alright, seeing none. Thanks. Oh, oh, Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, just, just a, just a couple things that kinda stick out to me, small potatoes. Why the, why the increase to the Ramadan dinner up to 25,000?
That is a, um, the revenues that come in through the mayor's Ramadan dinner are also the expenditures that are donated to
Food bank.
The, the food bank. And so revenues equal expenditures. If you go to the revenue side of the budget, it should say 25,000 on that side, as well as the expenditure side, so.
Alright.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Um, I guess I'm curious, and this, and this really is me, me just wondering. When you look at, as an example, upcoming Mackinac Conference, we know there would be folks from the office, and rightfully so, at that, at that conference, what line item supports that in this budget? Or is it not supported in that way?
I believe that would be
Those types of expenses?
Miscellaneous operating.
Miscellaneous side, okay. Real quick, what changes in your office were made? We, we know that there was a significant reduction in terms of the salary line item last year. What were the efficiencies that you all executed in that office to make sure that you were under budget?
Well, I suppose we all just sort of divide and conquer. You know, we, we, we lost, we were reduced to position. So those responsibilities were essentially just spread across the rest of the staff.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you. And I guess Adam's question made me come up with a question. So miscellaneous operating covers possible trips? Is that like if the mayor is a representative or goes somewhere, for example?
Yes, it generally includes office supplies, copier expenses, promotional expenses. It can include a multitude of things. There's, the US Conference of Mayors has been paid there in the past. Yeah, it, generally, the miscellaneous operating is all those activities that are not really covered under another account number.
Sure. Did the, um, was there a trip to, was it either Dubai or a climate conference that the mayor went on last year?
We could look into it.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and check. Yeah, sure.
Um, I mean, I think it was like almost a week, I think. I, I was just wondering, did that miscellaneous cover it? Because you know I care all about the climate, and I was wondering whether our funds cover the trip to the climate conference. And then, you know, if so, I'm just gonna learn more about what we learned and stuff and how we applied it.
I can find that out.
Thank you.
Do we have any additional questions? Councilman Cost?
So when we're looking at the, um, the miscellaneous operating for the trips, because now that's an idea sparked me, the other folks, department heads that go on these trips, does that come out of a different fund? So say if the mayor's, you know, some of the staff members, but then some department heads also go, does that all come out of this pot?
So, um, departments have their own budgets, and so a director that's going on any sort of conference will allocate that cost to whatever line item is appropriate within their own budget. The mayor's office usually wouldn't cover the cost of other departments' travel.
And then I noticed that there's the parking subsidy for the mayor, which we've seen throughout this budget. I did not see one, though, for the public, the community media.
Do you have any employees that have parking needs?
We do have parking for our folks in the, in the Capitol ramp.
Yeah, the parking allocation was based on a spreadsheet we received from, um, the parking division. I will double-check. It is quite possible that their employees got charged to us if they're not in a parking ramp that is unrelated to us. So I'll investigate where they belong and if we put it in the right place.
And Jake, one last thing. The insurance and bonds, there was a significant increase in the mayor's office. Do we know what caused that?
Just the, um, the basis of updating the personnel expenditures after a number of years of just incrementally increasing the rate itself without looking at the overall distribution. So some departments received a larger share, some smaller. Just tidying up and better representing our expenses in a defensible way.
Thanks, Jake.
One, one second, Mayor. Do we have any additional comments from council? Okay, I just have one regarding the mayor's office. I'm glad you're here, Mayor Schor. When you, when you mentioned about sharing services, because we, you guys eliminated a deputy mayor position last year, but wasn't a construction manager added to the budget as well in, for the mayor's budget? Could you explain that?
Yeah, the, the construction manager actually was in, it's, it's not actually a construction manager, it's in public service. So Roy is in public service, taking over for Marty, who retired. And so he's doing that as well as construction management, so he's actually in public service. He's not in the mayor's budget.
Okay, because when he was down here last, maybe he missed
Yeah, he said the mayor, he got nervous in front of you all. Some people get nervous in front of you all. And he got nervous and said, "I'm in the mayor's office," but he's, he's actually in public service.
Okay, appreciate that. Now, did you have anything you wanted to add, Mayor?
Yeah. And again, I apologize. I was listening. I like to listen because I, I trust these folks to handle my office. But in terms of the, the COP 28 question, that was fully paid for by Bloomberg Foundation, which I believe I, I said at the time and I say now. The Mackinac Conference is fully raised and paid for. M3 raises and pays for that, so Tiffany Dowling. So we don't actually raise or pay for that. That is raised and paid for that by, by M3. So neither of those will be in the budget because neither of them has a taxpayer dollar flowing through. And then Ramadan, to Luciana Solis's credit, she actually works with a variety of folks in the community and raises money, and she actually raised more this year than she had in the past. And those dollars, whatever, oh, no, yeah, Lucian and Don Kerowitz. Actually, Don Kerowitz, I'm confusing this. Don Kerowitz worked with the food bank and with East Lansing, and they raised quite a bit of money, more than expected. It all comes to the city of Lansing, but none of that is taxpayer dollars. That has contributed from everyone that goes to the Ramadan dinner, comes to us. We write a check to the food bank, so, and actually, there's very few expenses because of the food, the flowers. Most of that is donated. The Ramadan dinner is exceptional, and if we raise more, we can donate more to the food bank. So thank you to Don Kerowitz, but good questions.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments from council? Alright, well, I appreciate you guys being here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Alright, moving down. Mr. Lawrence, I think you're still, uh, no, I'm sorry. We have, uh, we are to the general fund status report. Fiscal, I am sorry, city clerk. You blended right in there. Chris Swoe. Mr. City Clerk. No, no, no. Well, good evening. Clerk Swoe?
Good evening, Mr. President. So glad to be here to discuss the budget for my office. So responding to the questions, the difference between the current and fiscal year and proposed budget, really it's just the cyclical nature of elections. We are heading into a presidential election year, so coming off of a presidential primary, which is an extra election, and heading into a presidential election year, which has a very much higher volume and turnout. And so we will be having additional people and additional ballots, various things. And also the full implementation of early voting on a statewide basis that will be nine full days for both the August and November election, although I would note that the state does have a grant that they are reimbursing us for many of the costs associated with the election workers and various other things for that. Changes in services that the department is responsible for, again, those election changes, you know, the nine full days of early voting for every election. And then more primarily, the Charter Commission, whose first meeting will be May 21st. I am the clerk of the Charter Commission, so that will come with it. A lot of administrative duties, as well as the direct meeting duties. And, you know, we will have, they have a separate line item, but my staff will be involved in, in that heavily. And then also, we are going to start offering evening passport appointments. As you know, we're a passport facility that our residents find great convenience. And other communities do drop in evenings. Because of security here at City Hall, we've resisted or not done that, but we realized that if we did it on Monday evenings ahead of city council meetings, we could take advantage of the building being open and provide that service to the people of Lansing. So we will start that in June. Rate or fee increases, we have several. We are asking for, as you know, with licenses, we now have online applications, and we are having pretty good buy-in with that. But we have had some businesses who type in the same information onto a PDF and then send it to us rather than typing into the system. So we are asking for a paper application fee because my office then has to re-enter that data when they, when they do it on a, on a PDF and then email it rather than typing it directly into the system. So we're asking for that $25 fee to further encourage them to do their direct submission. And then we have some, I would just call them inflationary increases in several of our licenses. We're trying to keep track of, you know, costs and increment, but not do like weird dollar amounts. So we're kind of looking at, you know, if we have a 3% increase, would it take it to another dollar amount? And if not, then we'll wait the next year. So several of our licenses, we are proposing small fee increases. In terms of major equipment purchases, we don't have anything really planned as a major purchase this year, although we, we have laptop in every polling place, and we do try and keep those on a regular replacement cycle, so we do have funds in here for, for that. And then we also have a set aside. The election equipment we have was purchased in 2017. It was federal and state funded, and they have promised not to pay for it again. So we expect in a few years that there will be a statewide requirement. So we have been setting some money aside for that, and we appreciate the council administration's participation and agreement with that. And we also have an annual maintenance fee on the current equipment that we have to pay every year. Let's see. Are there any combining or contracting of, of positions? There's no combining or elimination. We are, we do contract We are, we do contract regularly with several individuals for elections, since it is so cyclical within the year. So the several weeks leading up to an election, our workload spikes to a point where, you know, it would be impossible for us to do it with our Teamster, great, wonderful Teamster staff, and they would, they would not want the amount of overtime that they would have to do to get it done. Plus, you know, most of it needs to be done kind of during the regular workday. So we do have contractual employees, and that will be going up again because of the volume for the presidential election. And we are, but we are moving one part-time three-quarter position to full-time position with this budget. Are you able to perform all the necessary responsibilities? Yes, we are. And are there any new initiatives or services? You know, again, the evening passports, we are adding that as a service to the residents. The two largest vendors, I actually kind of want to give you three because two of them kind of overlap. KCI, who is our mail processor, and the post office are the two, two of the largest, but they kind of overlap, and some of the bills that we pay to KCI get, are kind of passed through to the post office. Obviously, we can't really bid out the post office, and KCI is a larger contract for the entire city, so I don't know when that was last bid out. And then also, I'll mention Election Source, who is, who we pay the maintenance fee for our election equipment to. And again, that's tied to the election system we have, and we have no ability to bid that out independently of the state approving a new election system. And then the final question about operational changes to become more efficient, you know, we're always striving to be more efficient with both our elections and our operations, but I wouldn't say we have any operational changes. We have been adjusting to our new election unit now that SWAC is being torn down, and we are at Rio, Rio Elections Office, former Rio Elementary. So we are adjusting to that and trying to make that work as effectively as we can, and trying to figure out, you know, the long-term needs. We did receive an appropriation from the state of $1 million towards an election center with, we have another ask of two additional million, and we have been told that that, there's a positive outlook on that. So once we have that pool of 3 million, we are looking to bring a resolution and move forward with a more permanent solution for our election operation. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Our internal auditor.
Yeah, Chris, a couple of questions. Maybe you've already answered the first one because, you know, next year is a big year for you, you know, with the, with the presidential election. And you talked about how that's going to increase some personnel costs, you're going to get some money from the state to help implement some of the changes that were from ballot initiatives and whatever. Because I noticed that in fiscal '24, your miscellaneous operating was $200,000, and in fiscal year '25, you're asking for $200,000, you know, and that just, so, so is that correct? The increases in costs are covered elsewhere?
Not all, you know, we will have additional ballots to mail out, but, you know, we do try and be as efficient as we can with that. So, you know, we've been able to make it work.
Okay, all right. And my other question, again, has to do with people and personnel and temporary help and everything. And you've got two line items in your budget, and one of them talks about election inspectors, and then the next one is just called temporary help. So what's the difference if election people are not temporary help?
They, election inspectors, because they're defined in state statute, we've always had them broken out. So those are the people that actually work in the precincts, either on election day or in an early voting site or at our absentee voter counting board. They take an oath of office for that day. You know, they're regulated, they have to apply as either Democrat or Republican or another, a specific party under state law to be able to work. So they're just kind of a different pool of people. The temporary help are the people who might staff our front desk and issue absentee ballots over the counter, help us prepare and organize the election equipment for delivery to the precinct, the person who drives around in city car and collects the drop boxes, which we're required to do every day. We're open for the 40 days before the election. So just all those various more operational side, the election inspectors are more specifically those working at a polling place.
Okay, that answers it. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Do we have any additional questions or comments from council? I see, and I just have one as a follow-up. From the increase of your budget, and I know that you mentioned that there's a state grant potentially to help pay for it, but with like a 20% increase is what I tabulated, can you explain why the 20% increase if you plan on getting a state grant?
Well, we have to, we still have to spend the money even if they were reimbursed, so it's still an expense. And if you think about every day of early voting, I think for the city of our size, we need two to three locations for the November election. Each location has to be open nine days, eight hours a day. They have to open and close, so you're looking at at least nine hours a day. Nine times nine is 81 hours times five to six individuals. So, you know, we're talking about a significant chunk of money.
Yeah, and I understand that. I'm just, I guess, do you anticipate the 2026 budget, since there won't be a special election, that that would be decreased?
I would imagine that, yeah, the election inspector will definitely go down. And if you look at our past elections, it cycles through, through that. And, you know, it's always a little bit different, too, when there's a reimbursable election. So the current year budget, because the presidential primary gets reimbursed by the state rather than breaking that out, that went into the individual lines because it's the whole election is billed to the state. We lumped that into one thing called the reimbursable elections. So, you know, we kind of track it a little bit differently that way.
Great. I appreciate the clarification on that. Thank you.
Sure.
And I don't see any additional questions from council, so thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Okay, moving down the agenda, we are to D, general fund status report fiscal year '23, '24, third quarter. Jake in Jackson.
Happy to move chairs, and thank you for inviting me here again. I'm here with Jake Brower, Chief Strategic Officer, Budget Director, with Jackson Mills, Budget Analyst, Finance Department. Take it away.
Thank you.
So for fiscal year '24, the city adopted a budget of about $153 million in total revenue, including transfers, and $159.3 million in total expenditures. The current amendment budget as of 3/30/24 has a total revenue, including transfers and our reimbursement, of about $166 million, and total expenditures, including FY '23 carryforwards of $167.1 million. The general fund revenue collected through the third quarter was almost over $113 million, which was about 72% of the amended budget to date. Property taxes largely collected at the beginning of fiscal year, those were estimated to be $50.6 million. At the end of Q3, collections were roughly $50.4 million. Income tax collections were 59.6% of its budgeted revenue, and due to timing of reviewing state tapes for compliance and with resulting delays in collection, we are catching up in this most recent quarter compared to last quarter. Return on equity represents payments to the city from BWL. We received almost 47% of the amended budget year-to-date, and on April 29th, which would be after Q3 ended, we did receive about $6 million from them. State revenue budgeted to be $24.2 million. Quarter three-year date is higher than three-year average, with year-end revenue estimates expected to increase from the current budget. Charges for services trending higher than the three-year average for Q3. These can be attributed largely to ambulance revenues exceeding budgeted revenues. Fines and forfeitures are budgeted to be about $1.5 million. Quarter-to-date, they are trending below expectations, mostly due to ordinance fines being down. Licenses and permits estimated to be $1.8 million, and the city has received 58% of its budgeted amount and is on track. Interest and rents are budgeted to be $621,000, and we are over that amount. And I did look at last fiscal year '23, and at the end of FY '23, we exceeded the budget by almost $500,000. So it is, you know, on par. And then other revenues are a very small percentage of the general fund budget and are trending above expectations. As for general fund expenditures, they are trending below the three-year target by about 4%. A final year-end budget adjustment will be introduced for final adjustments and to allocate that vacancy factor of $1.5 million. Moving on to the vacancy factor, there's about 64 vacancies in the general fund and around 57 in other funds. This totals over $1.5 million in estimated vacancy savings in the third quarter alone. More than 40 new positions occurred during, occurred due to various circumstances, including internal promotions and transfers, with hirings holding vacancy rates consistent overall from the previous quarter. And then positions filled during the quarter, just to name a few, include city treasurer position, social worker in the police department, and assistant fire chief. And I did take a look at the city's website as of April 30th, when this report was given to council, and there were currently 21 full-time postings. These include code compliance, which actually includes five current positions that are open, chief building inspector, admin specialist for parks, police officers, which is about 11 positions, and two detention officers.
We're also excited that we're looking at bringing in a pretty large fire class coming up, as well as other hiring. Overall, there's the standard positions moving around where there are about 40 positions that opened up due to either transfers, promotions, retirements, and the HR department kept up with hiring most of those positions, holding our rate studies. So although we still have about the same number of vacant positions, there's a lot of movement underneath the surface. That is pretty positive. As it relates to the financial aspect of the quarterly report, taking a look at property taxes, we might see a few final adjustments, but both for '24 and for our projections into '25, we're not expecting any impacts that will affect the FY '25 budget proposal. Income taxes have come in stronger in this third quarter, which has been explained previously to be related to some deferred collections of stronger enforcement in the past few quarters, where there was more data analysis in the beginning of the year, analyzing the state tapes and so forth. As for the return on equity, we're going to have an agreement before you very soon, so we're feeling positive about our estimates there. State revenues, the House just passed their version of their proposed budget for the next year. The Senate is expected to do that soon. Both bills would be positive for the city of Lansing, in particular, maintaining the capital city allocation, as well as contributing into a revenue-sharing trust fund, which would further secure revenue sharing going into the future to be more stable, where, at least in the governor's budget proposal, at least 5% of the one-time revenue, 5% of the statutory portion of the revenue sharing was one-time. Under both Senate and House, all of it is reoccurring revenue. Charges for services, looking strong. We expect that strength to continue. And then the remainder of expenditures, nothing really particular to bring out at this time to your attention. So overall, looking good into next year, and, yeah, we're here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Our internal auditor, Jim Blon.
Thank you, Mr. President. In part of the council packet tonight, I issued a memo with four bullet points, and Jackson covered every one of them. They really, they provided a really good synopsis, multi-pages with plenty of information. A couple, like I said, there were four that I really wanted to drive home with city council, and that is that the general fund revenues are at about 72%, even though we're 75% into the fiscal year at the end of the third quarter. That couple of percentage points, because a lot of the revenues are seasonal and don't come in evenly across the 12-month fiscal year, that's not something that I think council needs to be concerned about. Jackson mentioned, at the end of the third quarter, there were 64 vacancies in the general fund, 57 vacancies in other funds. For city staff our size, that's probably pretty high. But as, you know, especially the people that work in private business know, it's a tough time to hire right now. One thing that Jackson did point out was that at the end of the third quarter, only 21 full-time positions were actually posted on the website as being available for people to apply for. He also covered the vacancy factor. You know, every department is encouraged to present a budget of their department being fully staffed for that fiscal year, and so the vacancy factor is a savings. And as I think Jackson mentioned, at the end of the third quarter, they had accumulated $2.37 million in vacancies, budgeted vacancies, and that's not allocated in the general fund when you look on the new financial software, but it is something that gets applied at the end of the fiscal year. And again, he mentioned departments' expenditures, department by department by department, pretty much of them at 75% of the way through the year have actually spent less than 75% of their budgeted money. So those were my observations, and if, you know, council has questions further, we'll intergen them.
Much appreciated, Jim. Do we have any questions or council, or comments from council? Okay, Councilman Jackson.
I just have a little question about the vacancy factor and the 11 police officer positions. I guess my question is, is could somebody just respond to me this week about, in the last 10 years, what was the lowest number of vacant positions for the police? I only ask that because as long as I've been aware, there's always been a large number of vacancies, and the hopes that they'll be filled, the need for them to be filled, but yet the realistic not being filled, and retirements coming. So I just wonder, in the last 10 years, how close to zero was that number? Thank you.
I take it you're going to get back to him on that, Jake, right? I see you trying to do the math in your head.
Yeah, I was trying to think how I would pull that data, but I'll take a shot at it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do we have any additional questions or comments from council? Okay, seeing none. Thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you for inviting us.
All right. Okay, moving down. So we are discussion action items. E, fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget policies. As I mentioned last week, this is an annual exercise. We do have some proposed amendments, and I'm looking over to Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to remind you, I'm a budget nerd and chair of Ways and Means, so some of these are a little technical. Some of them you might want to just reject flat out, but I wanted to bring them to this group. And Sherry will tell you I missed the deadline by 60 seconds. It was 10:01 on Thursday morning, so I apologize, Sherry. I'm going to work from mine because I think I have my notes on mine, so if I get to something or skip one that isn't one that I've suggested, then please stop me. I figured it'd be easier to, to move them individually than all at once because there might be some that are wanted or not. That's up to you, though.
Yeah, that works.
Okay, cool. All right. So the first one, in the vacancy factor, I've heard around this table a number of years in a row the desire to in-source positions. That could be a challenge in a situation where the personnel budget is full, but the operations budget is not. So allowing the transfer between operations to personnel of, for the purposes of, trying to save vacancy savings from general fund department personnel budgets against the budgeted vacancy factor for the purpose of insourcing contracted positions. is one that I thought we could put in there as a transfer for administrative budget transfer authority. So I would move that one to get it in front of you for discussion.
Okay, and this is for the vacancy factor-funded and unfilled positions?
Yes.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions, comments? Councilman Jackson.
Just, Peter, if you could, if you could just explain that a little more. So like, what's the reason and exactly what does it do again? I know you said it, but just a little.
Yeah, so the idea is to be able to use dollars to fund positions maybe out of other places where they, if they're in the vacancy factor line, so that they can actually be filled rather than just allocated there. So I've heard a number of times, we want to un-privatize, in-source some of these positions. This would be the functional way to do that without bringing a budget amendment to the city council.
Okay, I'll probably support it, but maybe I'll figure out exactly what that means a little later.
All right, we can chat, we can chat offline, too, if you want.
Okay, so we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion passes.
Yeah, sure. The next one is under the vacancy factor-funded unfilled positions. Just kind of cleans up sort of the design of the report, standardizes it with things we've seen before. I actually, I won't lie, I've talked to some people in the administration budget office about what these actually look like and what's in our budget policies. So it's more of a housekeeping piece than it is a functional change in what we're doing. So I'm going to make that motion on changing the vacancy factor-funded unfilled positions to the struck-out language with the added language, which would require the administration to include in its annual report organization charts, to include division and/or site position titles, bargaining unit, classification level, and position FTE for each department, but not to include individual employee names. Obviously, privacy important.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes, it is, I'm sorry.
Okay. Do we have any questions, comments from council? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion passes. Moving on down.
Next one is carryforwards. I would move to add to carryforwards the funding that we've designated for the charter commission, just in case they don't expend it all in year one, and then the opioid settlement dollars. And there's quite a lengthy list of things that we can use the opioid remediation dollars for. This is just, remember, we had a discussion about this at Ways and Means at one time. So I'd move that. Change?
Okay, we have a proper motion. Do we have any questions, concerns from council? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion passes. Moving on down.
Yeah, the next one clarifies that unspent human services and community, where did I put that, sorry. Unspent human services and community support agencies funding will be considered committed fund balance for purposes of financial reporting pending additional appropriations or reallocation by the city council. So I'm not going, I'll kind of go into a longer explanation on the general fund reserve policy. As we've been dealing with a ton of one-time money and money in and out and designating and undesignating and some of the things related to bonds and all that, it was becoming clear that we needed to really kind of clarify what we're counting and what we're not counting toward fund balances, things like that, as we start to allocate the 1.35% or allocate our fund balance percentage in the caps and so on and so forth. So adding this here to clarify that this is considered incumbent dollars. So I would move that one.
Okay, we have a proper motion. Do we have any questions, comments from council? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? Motion passes.
So the next one, there's two, there's several big changes, well, several changes, there's two big chunks. One is an entirely new paragraph and one is not. So I'll go through the first one and make that a motion first. Basically, when looking at this, as I mentioned, we had a lot of money in and out, so it kind of artificially inflated our fund balances in some cases. So I actually have the mindset, we shouldn't have a cap on how much we put in our savings account, like that's a decision we should make every year, but we should have a floor. And then also, if we do fall below that floor of 12%, didn't change the 12% target, requiring a submission of, to the city council, a plan to restore those reserves to 12% in a period not longer than 5% or five years, excuse me. So that's the change I'd make there. It does change, removes the cap of 15%. So I would move that change.
Okay. We have a proper motion. Do we have any questions, concerns, council? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion passes.
Okay, and the next one is the purposes of defining a fund balance, and maybe Mr. Delain can step in a little bit and help out, too, if there's any other deeper questions. But we're talking the difference between the GAAP fund balance and the fund balance. And I think when we start looking at fund balances for the purposes of budgeting, we should be very clear on what we're defining as a fund balance. So I've added for the purposes of revenue and expenditure thresholds and budget policies and ordinances, i.e. the HRCS ordinance. General fund expenditures shall be considered to exclude transfers out, except when otherwise specified, and general fund revenues shall be considered to exclude transfers in and indirect cost recoveries, except when otherwise specified, i.e. the Ramadan revenue does not count as revenue for the purposes of how much dollars we hand out for their HRCS allocation. The budget policies and ordinance are vague, and it's sitting through the process on Ways and Means several times. It doesn't have to be vague, so specifying is what I was going for here. So I'd move that change.
Okay, we have a motion, please. Do we have any questions, comments?
I would just mention that I think that's a good idea. You know, I think it's very important for the public that they know that not everything in the budget is out of their tax dollars. You know, there are other funds, you know, and they come, money comes from the state, money comes from federal. So, no, I would, I would think this would be a good thing to move.
All right, thank you. Okay, we do have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion passes.
Okay, the next one, I will note, in the interest of full disclosure, I think Sherry took it as a friendly grammatical amendment I submitted under investment policy, changing in accordance to state statute, to in accordance with. So it doesn't need to be probably actually amended, but that change did get made if you're looking at last year's to this year. So, did you want me to make a proper motion to change the word "to" to "with," but it was style?
Yeah, might as well, keep it going.
Okay, I'll make a motion to change the word "to" to "with." All the, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, we have a proper motion. Any questions, any comments, pretty cut and dry? Okay, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
So on this one, I've sat through a number of budgets, and I haven't seen strategic planning and budget development kind of work the way that it is written here, so I just moved to strike it. So I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion to strike it. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Opposed.
Oh. I move to reconsider, and I don't need to change this, if this is something that some council wants to keep on.
Okay, we got a motion to reconsider to change to not strike it?
Just bring it back, so we can vote on it again.
Okay, motion reconsider. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, I will withdraw the change on strategic planning.
Okay, withdrawing the strategic plan change.
Next item is under grants. So you recall back a couple years back, there were some times when grants would come before us, we were not aware that the administration had applied for them, so we added the language to request that they give them to us ahead of time. They've, for the most part, I think probably 99% accuracy have done that, but through the process, there's been some things that Sherry and I discover along the way that we need to know a little bit more information. So I've just added a little bit more request on things that would be useful for the referral process when we're planning out meetings for these. So I would move that change to the grants section.
All right, thank you. We got a proper motion in place. Any additional comments or questions? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion passes.
And then the final one of mine is just striking up the non-motorized vehicle safety. For, David Ellis is watching, it's not that we don't think this is important, it's just a one-year budget thing that just got carried over, so I'm proposing to eliminate it from the policies.
Okay, we have a motion to eliminate the non-motorized vehicle safety. Any questions, concerns, comments from council? Okay.
There was funding allocated for it. I had taken a, an amendment through the public service committee to allocate funding for these purposes and directing those dollars to be spent in a certain way. Those dollars have not been reallocated in the last year, so I'm just pulling it out.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion passes.
And that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Spatafor. Okay, so I'm going to hand, pass the gavel. Okay, and I have some amendments that council leadership, this is something in the past that was passed through council, and there's four, five of them, and I'd just like to read through those individually, and we'll pass them or deny them. So training, all departments should allocate training dollars and follow policies in such a way as to continue their work to improve community relations and reaffirm the city's commitment to ensure equality and freedom for all people regardless of actual or perceived race, sex, religion, ancestry, national origin, color, age, weight, height, student status, marital status, family status, housing status, military discharge status, sexual orientation, gender identification or expression, mental or physical limitation, and legal source of income. And that's a motion. All right, so there is a motion on the floor. Further questions, comments? Seeing, oh, Councilmember.
So.
Will you turn your mic on, please?
I don't understand what the training, could you explain this? I mean, I know you just read it, but.
As far as training?
Yeah, is there something?
Just to make sure that all the training dollars, that there's no like discrimination, everybody's.
Oh, gotcha, okay. That's why I was missing, like, I don't understand.
Okay. Other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, next one's for contracts. By the first council meeting of October, January, October, January, April, July, the administration is requested to present to council a list of all contracts and copies of all purchase orders, including any extension and/or amendments approved by the administration over 25,000. The administration is requested to include non-appropriation clauses and other similar out provisions in all leases and vendor contracts. And with that, I would move through, make a motion. All right, there's a motion on the floor. Any questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, three more. City road maintenance construction capital improvement plan. The administration is requested to update on an annual basis and submit to council by December 1st of each year. And with that, make a motion. All right, there's a motion on the floor. Any questions, comments, need for clarifications? Councilman Jackson.
You know, I don't have too much of a problem, but is, is it a budget priority? I mean, policy, excuse me? I guess it is. I just didn't know.
It has been in the past, yeah.
Okay, because.
This is something that was.
That's fine.
Policies prior.
I just want to make sure that we're consistent, and I guess we are, so thanks.
All right, other questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, the next one is capital improvement projects, and we were directed by the city attorney earlier that we had some of the language in here, that the administration is requested to provide an annual report to council by December 1st of each year on all projects completed in the prior fiscal year regarding the capital improvement project budgets and all costs overruns and under expenditures. With that, I make a motion. All right, there's a motion on the floor. Any questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, and last one, residential solid waste. The administration is encouraged to analyze the costs and benefits of being the sole provider of all residential solid waste services through the city. And I would make a motion. All right, there is a motion on the floor. Sorry, I'm trying to see the full language. It's a motion on the floor. Any questions or comments? All right, is there a, was there any conversation, Jeremy, about including a date in here as we have in the past, or no?
No, there, I didn't have a.
The reason is that I think, you know, when you talk about studies like this, this potentially could guide budget priorities, right, asks, which are due by October 1st, and so I would assume we want to put maybe like a September 1st date in there. So I would, I don't know, ask for, ask that you would accept that as a friendly amendment.
I would accept that as friendly amendment.
All right, so there's a date inserted as.
September 1st.
September 1st, yeah. Okay, make a motion for that. All right, there is a motion on the floor. Any questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll get the gavel back. All right, thank you. Okay, and that, do we have any additional, I guess what I would say is, if there are any additional budget policies, to please have them to Sherry no later than noon this Thursday, so we can pass it on the 20th? Okay, do we have any additional?
Do you have any preference, Mr. Chair, on deadlines for budget amendments?
The same.
Same, Thursday morning?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, you said Thursday at 10?
Thursday at noon.
Thursday at noon, okay.
Thursday by noon, and that goes for priorities and budget amendments? Or, yeah, policies and budget amendments, I'm sorry. Okay, do we have any additional comments under this discussion item?
All right, seeing none, we'll move down. Okay, discussion item F, budget review and wrap-up. So I got a little high-level overview here. The budget review and wrap-up. Lansing City Council received the mayor's recommended budget on March 18th of this year. At that time, the budget presentations from all departments began with the last three departments being this evening. A public hearing was held on Monday, May 6th at the council chambers. An onsite, offsite location was chosen for our neighborhood option to present the public and the public, which was May 8th at the Alfred Smith Center. Thanks to all those two or three that showed up for that, it was a nice day out, I get it. The budget resolution includes fee increases in several areas, from graves in our cemeteries to trash carts, from liquor licenses to having a fireworks display. Council is reviewing these increases, and in most cases, they are minimal. Infrastructure highlights, 9.7 million investment in our major streets, 2.35 million for federal surface transportation program, 750,000 for construction maintenance, signage, and engineering costs within our parking system, 700,000 for new sidewalks, sidewalk repairs, sidewalk gap closures and trailways, 100,000 for sustainability efforts, 50,000 for Jackson Field Stadium. Additional city staff, this budget increases the number of city employees. Community media is adding one new full-time position to expand city programming, additional arborists for forestry, two solid waste operators for trash pickup and recycling, a housing needs specialist, a dispute resolution and training professional, two new firefighter positions. This budget also mentions the addition of 15 police officers and an additional crime analyst. That is contingent on the state passing a proposed state revenue sharing fund, which so far has not happened. But per the city charter, the fiscal year 2025 budget will be adopted by the third